Good sir, and you?
Doing well.
Hey.
Good.
Doing good.
Oh, well, I bet you that.
Uh, decently.
Yeah?
We had about twenty five people.
I saw this green, that should be turning. And I said, gotta go run out back to the camp. How are y'all?
He said, what do you mean?
I'm gonna see you.
I said.
So.
Gentlemen, how are you?
Well, well, I already know.
You're all. Ain't no gentleman here.
That's right.
Well.
Hello, hello, how are you?
I said, okay.
We can sit down.
Probably has his specific.
We're sitting here.
Be like that, are ya?
The reporter man bringing up the river. He's always got your back.
Yeah. Well, they have that a little bit strangely.
Oh, well, thank you. Well, thank you.
Oh, this'll be interesting. Okay, all that's.
Can we just sit down? We could sit down. Yeah, that's. I think you two can sit together, but the noise says the seat is not available.
Probably because of. I think there is.
Yeah.
So much.
The link get in there.
I'm thinking.
Oh.
John, I want to sit here. We need to sit right here.
Yeah.
We live together and we're married to each other and, you know. If anybody else wants to sit down that end.
I would love. He said, yeah. Bobby was my friend also. I looked him right down. He said, I think he just got along. Yeah. And do me a better good than Bobby. And I feel Bobby a little.
Yeah.
Well.
Beautiful.
He said, what was his name? I said, I'm reading. I'm looking at the ticket come over to that. And he would probably tell them all. Ear to thing. Yeah.
It's in the head.
I said, seven hundred.
It's kind of tricky.
I said, I was a. He said, imagine.
I have that exactly. So you're.
We obviously. We try to do it. That's how we got some. So I. He said, no. So where do I? He said, which one did that? So. You don't give it to me, I'll give you one. I'd like. And then you go. And then the folks go. She's got it. So you don't have to apologize. That's the only thought. You get out, walk up to the truck, I got it, sits. Sit there. So just wait. You may be hoping that truck don't stop this truck before he leaves. And that's exactly what you want. As soon as he start the truck, he knocked it out. It was snowing. He started. Wow, I'm trying to go good. It was a plumbed up. Tell you what. So. It was a darned.
Hey, Roger.
Hey.
How you doing, Jack?
Good. See you.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
I know, right? We're a building.
The official.
Oh, hey.
I can't hide it. How does it retreat?
I am.
I am. I said, he said, oh, good.
Oh, good. Oh.
But thank you for.
So. They're gonna come. He said, it's funky complex.
And that's.
Bro's a field of fun. I had a great.
He said, my father made you.
He was.
Absolutely.
Okay, sounds great.
Hi, Catherine. How are you? I'm happy here. Good thing.
Hey, how are you?
And you two can sit together.
Hey, Catherine.
Yeah, you two can sit together. Absolutely. There's none of these are good. Over one ground.
Man, she's looking good.
How are you?
Sure. In my. You're a dear of rich, Catherine. You're a. You want to mess up my yard?
Welcome to God better.
You just.
Just a lot of.
Here in the morning. Ah, the president here. My leg. Sure. Oh.
Oh, hell.
Yeah. This one. This one be the other time. All four.
Oh.
That's right. You got like. Yeah. You do.
No.
Oh. It's kind of curious. Yeah. Sure. You start going to see. Because of that, since you don't talk to them much. Do you know how much things. Is this. You know. I know. Where's the corn? It was a walk.
I'm gonna sit there.
I said, okay. You lost? Oh. It's my mom. Here, man.
So we just stand. Like we're moving down that end. You're excited. That way you also.
You guys are free. No, no.
Yes, you are. At the. Are you sure?
Which is true. Which is true. It's wrong.
Sorry. You can come through?
Sure. Now.
I think research was a lot. Because we're still in the. Because there's two of us together. We're like. We have a few couples in here, so it's sort of. Nice.
It's the high school.
Yeah, I get you, brother.
And we glad that. It's about to be good. Yeah. You don't. Come on, do what I'm doing.
Well, we can take them all. We can all get them out. You can't take me. Yeah, I know that I say.
What? Say anything?
Like this. All right. Thanks, listen. You sure? Go here.
You can. Get off. Stop there.
Look. It's all. Yeah. Good night. Good night.
Good evening, it is now six o'clock. We will call the New Kent County Board of Supervisors meeting for November the twelfth, twenty twenty, to order. We will all stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance led by Supervisor Lockwood.
Heavenly Father, as we come together, do the work for our county and our community, we ask you to guide us with wisdom and compassion, so everything we do is consistent with your will. We ask this in Christ's name.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Thank you. Our next on our agenda is our consent agenda. Are there any revisions or corrections? If none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, and that it be made part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, one of our favorite times of the year is recognizing those that participated and successfully completed New Kent University. So at this time, we have a special presentation for New Kent University Class of twenty twenty. Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you. I'm gonna read out the name of the certificate, and we ask that you come forward. Come forward to get your certificate. You know, again, I wanna say thank you, thank you, thank you for taking the time. I know we're all busy, your body schedule is busy, but you made it for that. It took me. To stay in this program. As I've said many times before, going on our program, and it's not for you to be experts in everything the county does, but it's definitely for you to know where to go to if you have any questions. Hopefully, you can put a Facebook name that you've heard in the past, and always, the county administration office is open to you if you have any questions as well. For the public that's watching, New Kent University is a citizen program, attending program for citizens to learn a little bit about how New Kent County operates. Hopefully, we've had. Hopefully, we've answered a lot of questions for you that you had starting into this program. And if you have any more, please follow us. The first name is Deborah Donalds.
She's all.
Okay. You'll make sure she's telling her.
She's watching.
All right. This is Sarah Erns.
You gotta go like this. Thank you.
Cynthia Green.
You. Congratulations.
Danny Green.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Kenneth Pierce. I'm gonna have to go there too easy. Erin Petrowski. Excuse me. No, it's perfect. Thank you. Elisa Relia.
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 Yeah.
Good day. Thank you.
Alan Taylor.
Come on down.
Virginia Taylor. Last but not least, the board's lunch. Thank you.
And I would just like to say, I know you took the class, and so they put you up the form, that if you want to, like I said, on a local board, if you can complete that form, so we will be calling you if you don't complete the form, I'm just saying. So notify your class. So anyway, we applaud you, thank you for taking that part.
All right.
So, this is our night of special presentations. Mr. Smolik will introduce the members of the Richmond Regional Tourism.
Thank you, ma'am, members of the board. I'm Matthew Smolik, your Director of Economic Development. It's my great pleasure to introduce J.C. Poma, Catherine O'Donnell, and Jack Berry here, representing Richmond Region Tourism. I just want to let the board know, we've had a great relationship, really working on a lot of things here. In my department, we've got a workshop for our local businesses, I'm gonna put a plug in for that on December first, it's a virtual workshop, I think they'll talk a little bit more about that. They've got a virtual I Am Tourism class coming up December tenth. They got a new website, they're gonna meet me out at the visitor center to talk about the upgrades out there, so I'm looking to bring some sporting events here, so I'm not gonna steal any of their thunder, I'm gonna have them come up here, but I'm not sure all three at the same time, or Jack first, or, I think, I think Jack Berry's gonna start us off, so, so welcome, Jack, come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
And Mrs. Berry, you're six feet away, if you want to take your mask down.
Oh, okay. We were debating about that.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Mr. Hathaway, I'm Jack Berry with Richmond Region Tourism. Thank you for having us tonight. We're gonna give you an update, because these are really unprecedented times, and how it's affected the region. And. Kenny? Oh, there you go. Which one's your first slide, Jack?
That's it.
All right, just scroll down.
So, of course, before the pandemic, just like the region, just like the state, just like the nation, just like the world, everybody was in record territory with hospitality and tourism. In twenty nineteen, we had an all-time record traveler expenditures of two point seven billion dollars, spent by seven point seven million visitors, and February, we were on track for the same, having a huge year in the fiscal year, until March thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth, which anniversary is the eighth month, this Friday the thirteenth, tomorrow. So we've been doing this for eight months. But with it, of course, in the record time, it was twenty-five thousand jobs in the region. However, with the pandemic, the hospitality industry was the most devastated in job lost. Hotels, restaurants, attractions, we lost forty percent of the jobs nationwide, and that's the number exactly for the Richmond region. We have not recovered back from that. Some of the attractions have opened up, like, of course, you can see Rosie's, but a lot of hotels are very underperforming, and of course, with the employment, too. Also, we just want to highlight, especially speaking of Rosie's, we did have our field trip right before the pandemic. We toured the breweries, the wineries, we took tour the Rosie's, just all the assets, it was wonderful, we were not socially distanced, we were all together in one motor coach, had a fabulous time, had a great lunch, was just outstanding, had a great time in the before COVID, my B C days. So a tour, kind of a COVID update, the red bars reflect the recessions. If you look at the red, first red bar, that's the collapse of the banks in September of two thousand and eight, it took us two years to turn it around, and then in two thousand and eleven, you can see we've kind of started tracking up, and in twenty nineteen, or twenty twenty, remember, this happened half of March, so half of March, April, May, and June devastated the hotel sales, but for the fiscal year, we were down twelve percent. The fiscal year we're in for twenty twenty-one, we're forecasting not quite fifty percent off of the record year, the record year was twenty nineteen, and that was thirty million dollars of hotel sales, we're trending right now about seventeen million dollars, not quite fifty percent in this fiscal year, and I'll show you the numbers here. So this is the M S A for Richmond Petersburg, we're lumped together, and you can see April was absolutely the basement. We're off by more than fifty percent of the occupancy, we're trending right at thirty-one percent, but you can see through the months since then, we've been kind of inching our way back, nothing great, J.C. Poma, who's gonna talk to you about sports tourism, it's the family and friends and the sports tourism that have saved the day for us. For, if you look, now, this is just September occupancies for these individual destinations, and as goes Virginia, goes Richmond Petersburg. We always mirror what they're doing, occupancy, look at in twenty nineteen, we were the same occupancy, it's seventy-one point two, seventy-one point six, same thing in twenty twenty, we're just short of fifty percent, but what I want you to notice, look at Arlington. Arlington is always the number one occupied destination in Virginia. Now they're the lowest, and the reason that they're lowest is because the business travel and government travel has come to a screeching halt, and look at Williamsburg, I mean, this should be the golden days for Williamsburg, you know, it's the autumn, it's the best time for the travel, they should be at seventy percent, they're below thirty percent, and what happens is, these destinations are dependent upon one pillar of travel, whereas we are not, and I'll get into that in a minute. We had huge, exciting news, this is the best news I've heard in eight months, when Pfizer and Eli Lilly came out this week with their, they're just announcements, because I thought the final phase, the beginning of the first in the quarter three in twenty twenty-one, I thought that was aggressive, but now we're starting to believe in the third quarter of calendar year twenty twenty-one, we'll start to see the rebound back. Just very candidly, the first quarter of twenty twenty-one is falling apart, January, February, March, I'm losing business, they're canceling, I was on the phone today, all with quarter two, that's falling apart, but twenty, the quarter, the third quarter of July, August, September of twenty twenty-one is holding, except the exception of sports tourism, which you'll hear about shortly. So we do have four pillars of travel, and we're very strong in all four pillars, so family and friends is the number one reason people travel worldwide, always before pandemic, whatever, and it's the only travel segment, basically, that's traveling today, so if you think since April, if you've done any travel, I would dare to say it's probably been related to family and friends. Second is the business travel, and that's always the last to come out of these recessions, and so business travel, so when you look at our occupancies, they're about fifty percent, but the corporate hotels, downtown hotels, it's really tough, they're in twenties, they're in the teens with the occupancy, because there's no business travel. But if you look at the top left, sports tourism, meetings and conventions, the meeting, conventions have stopped, but sports tourism has not stopped. And again, I won't take J.C.'s claim, but it's just amazing, just one quick example, in July, we had a flag football event, we expected sixty teams, a hundred and twenty showed up, we did not expect that. A baseball tournament about three weeks ago, we expected forty teams, it was sixty teams, and it continues to grow with sports tourism, and then the bottom right are tourists. So, right now, this is the snowbirds coming down south on I ninety-five, and I see that strong, and the I ninety-five hotels are doing pretty well, but no one's going to the attractions, the, almost all the attractions are hovering at about thirty percent, and it's just local business that's going there. So this, this is really, I showed this two nights ago, and this is about Thanksgiving and Christmas, and yesterday, on the radio, they said that the airlines are gearing up for a huge Thanksgiving weekend, so from U S A Travel, they say it's gonna be horrific, from United Airlines, they did say it's gonna be glorious, so I don't wanna miss, because like the people who heard me two nights ago, looking at this slide, then a day later, it contradicts it, but with a pandemic going out of control, with forty-three states being almost at record numbers, I dare say, personally, our Thanksgiving plans from twenty people is down to three, and I dare say, some of your family Thanksgiving plans have probably heard as well, but U S Travel, U S Travel says that Thanksgiving will be hit fifty-three percent, or not gonna be traveling for the holiday season, and I'm watching that, that second bullet with the five percent will travel by air, because the airlines are gearing up for it, and I just don't see that happening, so we'll wait to see what happens with that. This is the travel sentiment, this is nationwide, these are the trends, this, this is really exciting for us, because if you look at all of these boxes, we are at the top of all of these boxes, family and friends, as I mentioned, road trip, we're at I sixty-four, I ninety-five, visiting parks, fall foliage, bike trails, hiking, farmer's market, so we're doing pretty well for what the traveler sentiment is, what people are going to be looking for travel today. But as I said, meetings, conventions, they've come to a screeching halt, they've all gone virtual, except sports tournaments are on fire, and we're very fortunate to have so many sporting tournaments in our, in our quiver. With that, I'm gonna turn this over to Catherine to talk about the recovery.
Good evening, good to be with you all tonight, thank you for having us. I'm Catherine O'Donnell, Executive Vice President with Richmond Region Tourism, and I want to fill you in on what we've been working on to help recover since this has been going on. Just a quick update, this is our footprint for, so when we say the Richmond region, this is what we mean, and we're so glad to have New Kent as a part of that. New this year Colonial Heights joined with us over the summer, starting July one, so this is, this is the area we represent in all the things that we do. This is most of our team when we came on our tour of New Kent last summer of twenty nineteen, and. wanted to tell you that they have been busier than ever, and we have a lot of program updates to tell you about today. First, we launched a new website, visitrichmondva.com over the summer, and this website lists everything in all of our funding jurisdictions that are related to visitors, so restaurants, attractions, parks, everything's on there for free for the business. So, by participating with us, your local businesses get to be represented. We also launched a website and delivered the signs that you see in the picture right when the pandemic struck called Takeout RVA, so you could find restaurants that were open for delivery or for takeout. We have, one of the trends that Jack didn't mention is that visitors are very confused and concerned about safety protocols. So, we have two websites that we've launched, microsites called Travel Safe RVA and Meet Safe RVA, where they are clearinghouse for the information about the protocols that Virginia and our local businesses are taking, such as mask-wearing and different time ticketing and other things, to make visitors who are coming here feel safe while they're here. This is not advancing. I'm turning the dial. It's not doing it. Well, I'll just keep talking while they're working on that. Some other things we did over the summer, we really shifted to be more in communication with our residents. Typically, we're only talking to visitors who are planning their trips here, but since folks were focused locally, we've been talking to our residents about what there is to see and do. We have a blog called RVA Blog that had all the virtual experiences when we couldn't get out. We did trivia, we did digital puzzles. If you remember back when there were no puzzles to be found on Amazon in the beginning of lockdown, we did digital puzzles featuring destinations throughout our region. Again, really just trying to instill pride in our community about what there is to see and do, so that when our local residents feel comfortable starting to get out, then they feel more comfortable inviting their friends and family, and then travelers feel more comfortable. Thank you, guys. One new program that we have are 360 virtual tours. So, we signed on with a company called Threshold 360 to offer these free virtual tours to 100 venues in the Richmond region. The one for Colonial Downs and Rosies is live, and so this allows our meeting and event planners and visitors to experience our sites without having to come here. So, if we're looking at hosting a meeting and they want an off-site venue, they can go online and see all of the sites and meeting rooms in Colonial Downs without having to take a trip here. So, we're very excited about that. There's some interactive mapping as well. Next slide, please. We ran a limited advertising campaign over the summer. If you remember, over the summer, everyone went to the beach, and they were on 64. Traffic was crazy, just like every other year. So, we ran 21 billboards with 11 different messages in the Virginia Beach and Hampton area, just to keep folks, have folks keep the Richmond region top of mind, and encourage them to come and visit us. Next slide, please. Another thing we're thrilled about are the new direct flights that JetBlue has announced. I'm sure you've seen the news, but we will now have our first-ever direct West Coast service, thanks to JetBlue to L.A., as well as direct flights to Las Vegas and Tampa. So, our team has been working hard to encourage people who live in those destinations to book flights to come here and explore the Richmond region. And we know folks, although they haven't started some of the routes yet, we know people are going to be thinking about spring break soon, especially as news of a vaccine continues. So, we're thrilled to be promoting that. Next, please. As I was mentioning earlier, we have the RVA Blog, we have all kinds of social media going on, pretty much every channel we're on. You can follow us and hashtag us, #VisitRichmondVA, and we're, again, trying to keep the ideas of safe socially distant things to do in the Richmond region alive for people who follow us on social media. Next. We also do a lot of media relations, and this has been going strong all through COVID. So, these are the travel media who are writing articles about the Richmond region. So, before COVID, the New York Times named Richmond one of the 52 places to visit in 2020. Then after COVID, they named us one of the 52 places to visit virtually, which is fantastic, but we've had hits in essence. And even, this one was great, at Trip Sided, they wrote a story about a road trip to Richmond and included Jolene Family Winery in it. So, we're constantly pitching ideas. We have a PR firm that we work with in New York, and then we have staff here that shows travel journalists around and tells them all about what's new and great in the Richmond In addition to sports tourism, which you're going to hear about soon, we also help book meetings and conventions. And so, this could be anything from a family reunion, to an association, to a religious convention. As Jack mentioned, many were canceled and postponed. A lot of those, we were able to rebook for future years, which is exciting. So, we're looking at moving things that we're supposed to have in this summer, maybe into '22, '23, '24. But we are booking new business, and there are some meetings that are taking place. They're smaller. We had just had one that we booked come in last week with a smaller and more socially distant meeting. So, we're seeing that slightly open up, which is promising. We also launched a program called Meaningful Meetings that is designed to align our recruitment of business events with economic development sectors. So, we're working with economic development organizations within our region to target certain industries and bring their meetings and conventions here that would be beneficial for us. And, of course, we always recognize our local folks who help us recruit meetings and conventions. So, our RVA Champions program is for residents of our region who are not professional meeting planners, who raise their hand and help us bring their groups here. And, of course, we had to pivot and do this online this year. So, in April, instead of doing our breakfast, we did a virtual RVA Champion celebration, recognizing 29 champions, and those folks brought in $10 million in economic impact through the events that they helped recruit. So, one message we always like to remind folks is that anyone can be a champion, whatever group you're a member of, we are happy to help recruit it to our region, and all of our services are free for the meeting planner. We have, of course, our visitor services. All of our visitor centers were closed initially during COVID. We have reopened the one at the Robinson House, that's the one pictured here, as well as the one at the airport. This is a great story of this couple who was visiting that were originally planning to go to Paris and canceled their trip and came to Richmond for six days. So, we are seeing leisure travelers who are coming and spending their time in our destination. We also have a visitor's guide, which I know you all have seen before, and we inserted 20,000 of those into Washington Post subscriptions, so they came on a Sunday in the summer, again, trying to keep Richmond top of mind to our biggest feeder market, which is in northern And as Matt mentioned earlier, we're doing a lot of digital learning. I know everybody is zoomed out, but we are still offering that as our option. We are doing a workshop for New Kent County businesses on December the 1st, so they can learn how to take advantage of all of our free tools. So, if you know anybody who would be good to attend, I know Matt's going to help us get the word out about this, we will show them how to get their listing on our website, how to put their events on our calendar, and we're allowing virtual events, how to follow us on social media, all the ways that they can benefit from our far reach in marketing and advertising. And then we have our IM Tourism program that will be on December 10th, and that has gone virtual as well. Finally, you all have a copy of our tourism master plan at your places. This is a 10-year regional tourism master plan. We spent 2019 working on this plan. It was driven by research in our community. You can see on the slide there all the people that were engaged, and it's really a great North Star for where we're headed. You'll see in there the priorities around visitor experience, around infrastructure, around advocacy, and just how to strategically move our region forward as we look at the next 10 years, and we anticipate getting to upwards of 9 million visitors by then. So, please take a look at that. We have committees who are just starting to meet, and if you have interest in participating, Patricia's on one of ours, thank you for your service, or anyone in your staff would be good for any of those, please pass that along. We want it to be very community-driven as well. So, with that, I'm happy to turn it over to J.C., who will give you the sports tourism update.
Good evening, members of the board. Thanks for having us. I'm J.C. Poma, Director of Sports Relations for Richmond Region Tourism. It's always great to talk about sports, especially when we get out of here and Thursday Night Football is on when we get home. I was trying this. Say that again. No, ma'am. First, we want to show you a video. It takes a supportive hospitality community to host all of these thousands of athletes that visit the Richmond region every year, and we want to show you a few of those while they're here in our destination. We can just go ahead and pause that. It's like the blackouts in the, didn't the Super Bowl have a blackout one year in it? Well, one of the things that we want to talk about is, it takes that host community to do this. When we're in New Kent County and we're able to visit Colonial Downs, or we're at Dory Park with thousands of softball players at Dory Park, it makes us a very sporty community. So, we're very happy to have those sports in here. Henrico County accounts for 51% of our sports tourism bookings. That's adjacent to New Kent County. So, when all of those people are here, thousands upon thousands of athletes at Dory Park, we work very closely with Matt and his team to get the word out. We have things like our Experience Pass, things that just help get the word, get people, whether it's to your three golf courses, whether it's to your historical assets, whether it's to Colonial Downs and Rosies. So, it's just exciting to use that to get people out. Well, when we do do that, you know, Catherine and Jack talked about, sports is big business for us. It's a very long-term game. I was actually working today on a bid for USA Archery. We're talking 2024. You know, all of us here, we're just trying to get out of 2020 here and get into 2021 with no COVID, but thinking the long-term game. I was on the phone with Royal New Kent today, talking about the National Club Championship for Golf for collegiate. So, when we're talking that long-term game, it's things like working with Colonial Downs to establish cross-country courses in and around the area. We have the coach from University of Richmond actually coming to do some aerial viewer with the drones, so that we can set up courses to go out and try and attract things like Tough Mudder, the Spartanry. So, all of these things is what makes us that sporty community, and we're very blessed to have Matt, who's able to help us get the word out. But it's also, when we're out marketing the region, there's destinations all over the United States that we're competing with. There we go. Colonial Downs. As I said, and Jack have said, sports accounts for 69%. And on the next slide, you'll see that that breaks down to about 171,000 visitors. So, again, that long-term game that I was talking about, that's what it takes to bring in these folks to Dory Park that allows us to market and continue to bring folks to New Kent County. Now, sports has had an effect on us. We lost 43 sports events that accounted for $29 million in economic impact. When the governor announced we were moving into Phase Two, we were the first region to host events. We hosted 30 events from June 10th through Labor Day, and we've had, actually, that number today just went up when I ran it, and we will have had 55,000 visitors come to the region by Thanksgiving in two weeks. So, again, big business that we're happy to market and get those folks to these New Kent attractions. It's also afforded us great media opportunities, as Catherine and Jack have both spoken about, to tell the story of what sports tourism means to our attractions, what sports tourism means to the hotels in and around the region, and most importantly, everybody has to eat while they're here. So, when we're working with Matt and his team to tell that story, it's restaurants, it's attractions, and it's really encompassing the whole region. Looking towards 2021, it's really exciting to have all of these events. These are all events that are going to be at Dory Park. If I were to calculate all of the attendees from all of these events, we're talking tens of thousands of visitors that we're working to get to your attractions. When I'm lucky to have a child who hopefully plays sports, when I'm in these destinations, what do I want to look up and do when their athletes are playing on the fields? Play golf, visit the wineries. So, those are all the things that I talk about that we work with Matt and the team to do. Now, as I was getting to right when we got the slides back, it's really about one-upping the competition. Kings Dominion does things that allows us to market and attract the destination to sports rights holders, but we also have what we call an Experience Pass. It's in playinrv.com. Working with Matt and the team to get restaurants on this Experience Pass, get attractions on this Experience Pass, it's to tell the story to all of these attendees in the region. So, as we begin to attract these sporting events to venues like Royal New Kent, Vinaterra, to Colonial Downs, you know, we will have these assets in place to really tell that story and get people to your restaurants and to your attractions. So, on that note, we just wanted to tell the story about how important sports is to the entire region. Getting folks to places like Dory Park only really benefits the attractions here in New Kent County, and we're really excited to begin working with your assets, again, the Royal New Kents, the Vinaterra's, Colonial Downs, to attract these sporting events and continue to drive people to New Kent. So, it's exciting to be here, and we look forward to next year when we get to tell you on all the progress we're making. Thank you.
So, we thank you for your attention tonight. Wondered if you might have any questions for any of the three of us? Dory Park is, it's a Henrico Park right to the west of New Kent County. So, it's right along Route 5. As a matter of fact, if you've done the Capitol Bike Trail, it's right adjacent on the Capitol Bike Trail as well. So, it's literally the bike next door. It's huge. As a matter of fact, if you're doing the Capitol Bike Trail and you need a place to park, that's the place to park, because you don't drive right to the trail.
Just want to take the opportunity to thank you for the presentation tonight, and thank all of you for being here, especially with the weather out there, that shows a degree of commitment, so we appreciate that. We appreciate also your assistance with our Board of Supervisors Retreat, and we thank you and your partnership and working with Matt to make sure our websites are up and we are current on that. So, it is so appreciative, and I look to see you at our next Board of Executive Board meeting.
Thank you so much.
So, thank you so much. Hey, where y'all going? Okay, next on our agenda is our citizens' comment period. Have we received any emails? Okay. Team.
Work from extreme work.
Thank you, sir. No one signed up for the citizens' comment period, so we will close the citizens' comment period at this time. We have our Residence Administrator Report from VDOT, our November 2020 report.
Good evening, board, Madam Chair, Mr. Hathaway, Philip Frazier with VDOT, reporting on behalf of Marshall Wynn. Real quick, just want to say that was an interesting topic. I'm actually good friends with J.C., so it was kind of a pleasant surprise to get to watch him stand up here and set the stage for me. I hope that you had a chance to review the maintenance report. Right now, we're finishing up our last cycle of our primary and secondary mowing, continuing to patch potholes, do a lot of drainage. We had, luckily, New Kent didn't have too many issues the past 24 hours, but throughout our area, more to the western part, had a lot of drainage issues today. Trash pickup along with our mowing. Overall, we had 54 work orders, 39 of them that we closed, six emergency call-outs. And beyond that, we don't have any new projects going on or any new studies completed, have a few that are pending. Currently, I know that one thing that's been maybe kind of in your radar is the access management waiver for the new post office. Currently, that's in process. I think it's going to eventually have to be signed by our district engineer, but it is moving forward, so that's on our radar. Just want to make sure it's on your radar. Beyond that, I don't have anything else. If you have any questions, Mark and I are here to take notes and pass on the word, so.
All right. Thank you for your update. Mr. Lockwood, do you have any? Mr. Lockwood, do you have any, anything for VDOT?
I thought you said you wanted to get home tonight.
Just send them your list.
I've been, you know, commuting, communicating with Jeff Allgood and Joe Terry, and they've been very helpful. I know they're behind schedule, so I don't want to throw them under the bus. But we've got a lot of issues in the Barrensville and Eltham area regarding drainage. There's one on Parks Road and Curtis. I know they're working on that, but it's kind of like just the tip of the iceberg when it comes to drainage issues in Barrensville. Farmers Drive is, I would say, scary when it rains because there's several places where water washes over the road. For years, we've had high-water signs that get put up and blown over and disappear and get put back up again, but we don't seem to be making any real headway in getting those ditches maintained and getting the water to go through a ditch instead of across the road. It is, it is dangerous out there. So I would really hope that somebody's got that on their radar. I know it's been discussed before, but there doesn't seem to be any real accomplishment there. I haven't, I haven't seen any change in years. So if we can definitely get something moving forward with that. I still would like to see an updated study for the Eltham area, Route 33. I would definitely like to see a speed reduction in that area. There are numerous accidents occurring there. It is probably the highest traffic flow area on a secondary road in the county, and it's dangerous through there. It's, there's no two ways about it. So it's been requested, it's been done, and every time, we get the same pushback or the, the same feedback that the, some engineer says it doesn't need to be done.
Well, can I?
Please.
So there is, there was a recommendation as, as part of that 33 speed study. Currently, it's four lanes, correct?
Correct.
So one thing that we did, we looked at the 85th percentile, which I know Rob Velak came here last spring, and he talked about that. One of the recommendations for Route 33 was to turn that into a, what you call a twiddle. It's a two-way left turn lane. It is taking four lanes, two ways in each direction, and making it one way in each direction with a center lane. What that does is it kind of chokes everything down and it forces people to slow down. That is an idea that we brought to the county. We're still willing to talk through that, if that's something you want to do. But, but that is, that was our proposed solution for Route 33.
The only, one of the problems that comes to mind with that is there's a lot of homes and businesses along that road, so you're, you've constantly got people trying to either get into their driveway or out of their driveway. And when you choke traffic down like that, all you end up with is a continuous flow of traffic that nobody can get through. So now it, it, it's, there's just way too much traffic in that area for, for it to be a, a single lane. I think we'd be better off, I like the idea of a turn lane, but you know, I don't see how you can get a turn lane in without redoing the whole road because with all the trucks that you've got going through there, I just don't see it happening with it choking down to a single lane through that route. I mean, you're definitely going to slow it down, but you're not going to improve the situation any.
You don't reach your phone calls, I promise you that.
Yeah. And then the other area that I think that we-
Oh, you're not finished?
One more. Is just in the Barrensville area from, probably the worst part from Farmers Drive down all the way through to where the road is actually in James City County and goes to four lanes in front of Stone House. We just recently lost two young people to an accident at Barnes Road. They were killed on a motorcycle in that stretch. And speed may not have been a factor, I, I don't really know, but I do know that I've seen numerous close calls in that stretch of road. And the, and part of the problem that we have through there is a little bit of it is yours and a little bit of it is James City County, and we just can't seem to get the two districts to come together and recognize it as one stretch of road. And it needs to be addressed as one stretch of road. So I'd like to see a speed reduction there. It, it's absolutely necessary. So we'll just end it with that. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Mr. Steers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Frazier, thanks for being here, and I'll kind of piggyback on what Mr. Lockwood just said. Have you gotten the report from the Transportation Safety Commission meeting that we had on October the 14th?
Yes.
You have all that?
Yes.
Okay, because that's on there where there were, there have been 50 crashes, two fatal crashes in that area where he was talking about. And, and I agree, I, that would slow the traffic down, but I believe it would bring it to a screeching heart, especially during the summer months when people are going through there, going to the beach and, you know, the northern neck area. I, I just don't think that would be a viable option, but I'm not an engineer like you are. But, you know, I'd ask you to take a second look at that. Also, Route 249 and Dispatch Road, we have requested a traffic signal there at that intersection many times. And has there been any other studies done to see if that was warranted?
I believe there was a traffic, a signal warrant analysis done for 249, and you said 613?
613, yes.
Yeah, it, it did not warrant a signal.
We, we get that response from VDOT during our meetings quite often. You know, when you have the sheriff and you have the fire chief and you have the citizens of this county begging for things, and then it's like, well, the study didn't warrant it. I mean, to me, I think you guys should maybe listen to some of the, especially the sheriff. He's the one who deals with the wrecks and the ambulances and stuff like that, but-
And I, and I will say this, we did receive a letter from the sheriff, and it was pushed to our, our Chief Deputy Commissioner, Mr. Rob Carey, who used to be the district engineer in Richmond. He's aware about the, he's aware of the letter, and so is our current district engineer, Shane Mann. So, so I, I don't, I'm not putting together a response to that letter. I think that's coming from somewhere way above me. So there will be a response to all of these different traffic request studies. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. And also-
If, if I could, everyone, if I could, please. The corner of Dispatch and 249, I, I know you've done the study, which took into account existing traffic. It would be great if VDOT could look at it again and look at the anticipated traffic that's going to happen with the new elementary school that's going to be, well, breaking ground in the next couple of months. I'd hate to get to a point where it becomes an issue and then we address it. I wish, you know, hopefully, we can be-
Proactive.
Proactive and kind of anticipate the traffic there and build that into the study results.
Yeah, we can look into that.
But you, you have the list from the, the-
Do I have it on me right now?
No, but you did get a copy of it?
Yes.
Okay, so I won't go through all the rest of these, but please let us know what your, your decision is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steers. Mr. Tiller?
Just a few things. And on the pending study you've got for the traffic light requests is pending at Patriots Landing Drive. Oh, that's Patriots Landing Drive, I was thinking of Marketplace Drive. Because I think the, the light at Marketplace Drive, they were holding off on that because they were doing a longer study from, I believe, Bottoms Bridge all the way down to the hotel. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we completed a study for Marketplace. I believe it was back in May-ish, which showed that there was a warrant for a signal there.
Right.
However, our district in, our traffic engineer recommended that we do a full corridor study, that being from, I believe, the Star Motel to about the-
I think to the Chickomine River.
Right. And so that is going to be initiated and done by our planning group and the traffic, the TMPD group up in the central office. They're going to hire a consultant to do that study. We don't do those studies at the district. We have not actually gotten a consultant on board. I believe there's actually a meeting scheduled for Monday. Are you invited to that, Mr. Hathaway? Okay. That we're going to have a discussion with New Kent and VDOT to discuss that larger corridor study. The reason we're doing the corridor study is so that we don't have access management issues with, with signals. Putting a signal at Marketplace may not allow us to put one at Patriots Landing.
Or further down.
Because of future development, it might actually warrant one. But, so that's what that, that study is going to, is going to look to identify.
Okay. And I know over the last several years, they've been resurfacing Route 60 through New Kent County. And I think they've done the eastbound side through Bottoms Bridge, but they haven't done the westbound side. They stopped westbound, just west of y'all's little depot there in the middle of Route 60 there. But from there to Bottoms Bridge, they haven't completed. And I thought it was supposed to be done in 2020.
I, I do not actually know what the, the resurfacing schedule for Route 60 was, but we can look into it and let you know if it was-
Because even if they don't resurface that whole road, there are some places, I can sit on my back porch at night and I can tell when the tractor trailer has hit certain joints in that road. I mean, you can just hear the trucks ride by about a half a mile away.
And I know that that's been a priority is to, you know, consistently knock off sections of Route 60.
Right, and it doesn't just about all of it, except for that last maybe four or five miles. And I'd also had asked Marshall several months ago about, I forgot what you called it, tractor the other day with, has the arm on the side where they cut brush back on the sides of the road.
Right.
I mean, we've fortunately over the years, have had some really good neighbors that have cut the grass in our neighborhood. And, but the brush has grown over and tree limbs have grown over so far now, the neighbors aren't able to get through there on their lawnmowers to actually cut the grass anymore. And that's pretty much all of Five Lakes. Y'all could, yeah, whatever. I mean, they could, they could just drive through that whole neighborhood and find plenty of places.
You said that was at Five Lakes.
Five Lakes. I mean, just, just tour the whole neighborhood. That would be the best thing, because I don't know that I could tell you all the road names. And then they started a drainage issue on Club Drive a couple of months ago at a lady's house that lives on a corner. They did find out there was a broken pipe under the road, so a lot of the water was going under the road but not coming out the other side. And then some of the concrete drainage ditch was broken and was causing some drainage issues. But some of the people along their, their driveways, one lady in particular, she complained to me enough, and I finally complained enough, and they finally, they came out and all they did was dig a little, looked like maybe one scoop of dirt out of both sides of her driveway so the water would go in the pipe. But now it just stands there. It doesn't drain all the way to the corner, to the main line. It just sits in her, by our driveway. And a lot of her, several of their neighbors have had to go back and put some pumps under their house because the water's coming off the road, coming across the yards, and getting under their houses.
And that was, you said Club Drive?
That's on Club Drive, right there where it intersects with Brook. And if you go back, if you come in on Brook, take a left on Club, there's a house on the right, about five houses up, that has a circle driveway. And those two pipes there seem to be a lot of the problem because the water's not going through there, then it's washing across the street and coming towards Brook. That's the worst of it right there. And those houses on the left there on that corner are the ones that are complaining about the water actually getting under their house.
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely, we'll take a look.
Okay. And- And again, Hempek Road through the bottom. I, I didn't go through that way today, I wouldn't dare have gone down there, through there today with all the rain that we've had. But the ditches are getting wider and the roads are getting smaller because it's crumbling on, especially if you're eastbound, it would be the right-hand shoulder. There's a lot of places where the roads collapsed in some places, sometimes a foot or more from the shoulder into the road surface. Okay. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank y'all for being here tonight, it's been a while now. I'm going to be very simple, I'd just like to get two maintenance, uh, things on, on your schedule. I have two gravel roads in my district, and I know you get a call from one, the Kyle Whitehouse Road, a lot, and St. Peters Road, we've had a lot of rain, and I'd like to get that on your greater schedule to get that cleaned up. And also, I've been having a lot of complaints about signs. We talked about it at our last meeting. And it's my understanding that VDOT's going to send somebody down or either get the maintenance crew to do a sweep of all the signs in VDOT's right away? Have, have y'all been made, been made aware of that? I'm just-
We, we do maintain signs, so I mean, we can do that, I-
I mean, we're getting a lot of calls, I mean, all these housing developments from where I live, off Taliesin Road coming up here, that's like 18 signs, more than that now, in all the intersections, you know, plus the, I know you couldn't take down the election signs now, but we're, you know, we're, we're working with, I guess, the Attorney General's Office?
I'm sorry, I, I submitted a request with Marshall, so he'll initiate that process.
I'm sorry, I know what, I know what you're talking about. I thought you were talking about just cleaning our typical roadway signs.
No, 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 I'm talking about cleaning the-
I, I know what you're talking about.
Because I'm getting a lot of calls.
Marshall, he did reach out, he, he sent me an email, he's off today, but he let me know that it was brought up by Mr. Hathaway. I actually do have something from Hanover County who utilized that code of Virginia 33.2-122, something like that. Anyways, it would allow the board to pass a resolution that gives Mr. Hathaway the ability to come into an agreement with us to allow the sheriff's office to then remove those signs and then find those folks.
Well, there's got to be, hold on, hold on, I don't want to put it on the sheriff, he's got enough.
He's already not happy with me. So I believe, I believe that's how it works.
So the Sheriff's Department has to do it?
I believe it's the Sheriff's Department, I know it allows New Kent County to take that on. Maybe, maybe if anybody can go out and take, I, I'm not sure exactly how it goes.
We can, we can appoint someone through the resolution that you would adopt. It would designate the person that would be responsible within the county for removing it.
There you go, I was, I was right up until that point.
But anyway, I mean, do y'all sweep, I mean, with all those signs in your right ways, on all these intersections, do you take those up at any time, or could you look into doing that?
Can we, can we do that now?
I tell, I, I spoke with Mr. Mann, and he, he was the one that told me that because of all the signs and the, and the information that he got, had gotten about it, one thing he did put out there is that per sign, it was $100. And that you all didn't want to go into the building, billing process, so he would quite possibly come down, or not him, but VDOT would go through the county and do a sweep to clean up the signs. And then we would work on different resolutions as to how to maintain them.
I think once you tell them, if, if we take the signs up and they bring them, I don't know where we store them at, but we tell them it's a $100 fine for each sign. I, I think that if you want to put it, yeah.
When I take them down in my district, I take them down, load them in my truck, and then I bring them to your office and put them out by the picnic table. And that way, if someone is, is missing a sign that they had in VDOT right away, they should know to go to VDOT. It works great.
Okay, so anyway, we're working. So anyway, you're aware of that, and you, I guess we'll be working with VDOT trying to get that in place. Okay. Hopefully sooner rather than later. Brendan?
All right, I'm, I'm, just some quick things. I did get a call this past week on Cooks Mill Road. I know that it has been a lot of work on Cooks Mill Road and potholes and all of that. However, I don't want to say a formal board member called me and said, what the heck are y'all doing? Are you leaving it like that? Or is there some more asphalt that has to go on there? Because it's so many different patches on that road. And I don't know if you've ridden down that road or not. And I don't know if you've ridden down that road or not. But I'm I'm up to seven calls about it. And I'll just leave it like that and let you work on it and you call me. And you're gonna get a call from Clock Road because we've had a lot of rain. And as always, they're gonna need gravel and grade grading and gravel. In Barrensville on New Kent Highway, across from the Barrensville Post Office. We were doing really good with that drainage. But we didn't, when you went out, you didn't go far enough. And so the last rain we had and then on today when I went through, their houses are gonna be flooded again. And I know before you worked on it to clear those ditches, you were putting high water signs on there, which cars actually hit it and went airborne because the water was so high there. So it has been working, but now something is is clogged up, so. And I can send you all an email on the rest of my list and we'll talk about some things. We do appreciate you all being here and and look forward to you on a monthly basis now. So thank you, and we ask that you continue to be safe.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And wait, okay. And at this time, we have a few minutes and like a minute before public hearing. One minute. Okay, seven o'clock.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening for the first public hearing, you have before you Resolution R dash 39 dash 20. This resolution is to amend the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget for the appropriation of $35,593,691 for the construction of a new elementary school. Just to let you know, this week, the county closed on financing for that new elementary school where we borrowed $22,502,284. That's not the total project cost that we're asking you to appropriate tonight, but that's part of it. Other funding comes from 4 million dollars and revenues received from Colonial Downs. and funding that you've set aside and you've been setting aside since approximately 2014. And there's also school transfers totaling $737,744. Totaling the total project cost, again, of $35,593,691. With this action that you're asked to take tonight, which is required by code. The state code requires anytime that we have a budget amendment greater than 1% of our operating budget that has to be done by public hearing. But in taking this action tonight also will move the school construction project forward. Once the funding is appropriated, that gives the schools the legal authority to enter into contracts for construction. This time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If there are no questions. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. We open the public hearing. From here, no one signed up, so we will close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms.
Madam Chair, I just realized, I think we can continue with this public hearing, but for those that may be following us by TV or Facebook, I just want to note that I skipped over item number one, and this is item number two on the agenda. And after this action, then we'll go back to item one.
Any questions, discussions? Yes, Mrs. Steers?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I I don't have any questions. I'd just like to make a couple of comments for the public. One is not to toot the board supervisor's horn, but to toot the supervisor's horn. We stashed eight eight million dollars in the last six years. So I think that speaks very highly of the board for planning ahead. And also, the price of school, $35 million, that's a lot of money, but we've worked with the school board. I had many negotiations with the superintendent and the school board and everything. And what the public needs to know is that we will be building the school without raising taxes one penny. I think that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Steers and Mrs. Evelyn.
No, I agree with Mrs. Steers totally. We've been talking about this for years. We beat this horse a lot. So if there's no other comments, I have a motion.
Mrs. Evelyn.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt R dash 39 dash 20 to amend the fiscal year 2020-21 budget and appropriate $35,593,691 for the construction of a new elementary school.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Thank you. And and we look forward to the new school. We've been in conversation with the schools. And they have promised that they will still look for car savings wherever possible. And so we are thanking you in advance for being good stewards over our taxpayers' funding. And moving on to item number one. Okay, it's public hearing fiscal year 2020-2021 employee bonus, Mr. Hathaway.
Yes, and I apologize about that. I guess I was so excited about the schools.
I see.
Okay, item number one. You have before you ordinance O dash 15 dash 20 to authorize and appropriate funding for an employee bonus. State code requires anytime you adopt or approve an employee bonus, that has to be done by ordinance and public hearing. Normally, this is done as part of the budget process, but since it's outside of the budget process, we have to hold this individual public hearing tonight. What is being proposed is compensation really for our county employees and a show of appreciation for our county employees that, you know, been here day in and day out as of March when we declared a pandemic with the COVID-19 pandemic. Government operations did not shut down. And your staff has has worked very hard to keep operations open during this difficult time. We've been able to show our appreciation to public safety workers by using CARES Act fund to approve hazardous duty pay by public safety workers, being our sheriff's department, our fire and rescue department, our social services department, and our refuge site workers. With the guidelines of the CARES Act funding, it's very specific in who can receive hazard duty pay. This, what I'm bringing before you now is an opportunity to show our appreciation to them, those employees that have not received hazard duty play pay, but has definitely been here and have assisted us in keeping operations open. What's being proposed is for full-time employers, a $750 bonus. And for regular part-time employers, employees, a $300 bonus. The way we're defining regular part-time employees is those employees who since January 1 of this year have worked at least two hours on average per week. Those those part-time employees would be entitled to the $300 bonus. This time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on board, comments? Yes, Mr. Lockwood?
I just want to say that I think it's a good idea, Mr. Hathaway. We've we've got a lot of dedicated folks that went above and beyond during the time that we were operating, even though we, like you said, you know, we continued our normal operations. Our departments kept up with all of their demands that were plans got reviewed and permits were issued and all that. So I think it's a good idea to to recognize the above and beyond commitment of our employees. Thank you.
Any other comments? I I do want to say that I'm grateful for CARES Act, that we were able to increase and the salaries from, I believe, March or April until December for our fire and rescue, our sheriff's department, department of social services, and refuge workers. And refuge workers attend the Central Virginia Waste Management. And refuge workers have been working, if you don't think they work, they've been working through this pandemic, so. So just wanted to to let those departments know that they are indeed very appreciative for everything they do and for our staff that did not, I guess, qualify for hazardous duty pay. To simply say, we appreciate you and all that you do and your level of commitment when you could have chosen not to come in because it was made very easy by governing bodies above airs. And so and we never missed a beat, and so that is that speaks volume. And so this is a form of appreciation for all that you do for this great county. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Oh, here we go. I can see from here, no one signed up. We will close the public hearing. Any other questions, discussions? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
If there's no other discussion or comments. Madam Chair, I move to adopt ordinance O dash 15 dash 20 to authorize and appropriate funding for an employee bonus.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood? Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Thank you. We will now move on to our elected officials report. Mr. Lockwood?
Thank you, Ms. Page. So on Sunday, the 29th of November, when we have our grand illumination, the Clean County Committee will be providing a shredding truck for a shredding event in the afternoon hours of 1:00 to 4:00. So you can bring all your stuff down to get shredded. It is a safe and secure way for you to empty out a closet or a filing cabinet. And I'm going to encourage my wife to do both of those, so. Please come down and get rid of some more stuff. This time, it doesn't have to go to the refuge center. Also, I'd like to just comment tomorrow night, my pet project of Proclaiming Grace Outreach is gonna be doing their another one of their spot-on events on Facebook Live on their page, Proclaiming Grace Outreach. And they're gonna be conducting a Christmas sale to kind of kick off the Christmas season. They opened their Christmas display and all that stuff at the thrift spot on in Barrensville last week, and they had their most successful sales day ever last Saturday. So we're hoping to do the same tomorrow and this weekend. That'll be 7:00, Proclaiming Grace Outreach on Facebook.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Mrs. Steers?
Yes, Madam Chair. I know Mr. Jack Berry said that he had cut his Thanksgiving crew guests down from 20 to three. But on Thanksgiving Day, we're gonna continue to do what we've done in the past 10 years, and we're gonna serve meals to 1,000 people on Thanksgiving Day.
Not all at one time?
Not all at one time. We will be socially distancing with masks, and we will allow everyone to go through a buffet line, put on their plates what they want, and then go out the the side door. It was suggested we possibly we should just box up 300 or 400 dinners at a time and let them take them home. And I said, well, you know, personally, I hate turkey. I don't even like the smell of turkey. I don't like yams. And if I got home and I had a box of turkey and yams, I'd still be hungry. So and I feel like if you can go and stand in line at food line, why can't you go stand in line at a buffet line? So anyway, we're doing that again this year on Thanksgiving Day, and the meals are all you can eat for 99 cents.
And where is that taking place?
At the Providence Forge Recreation Center on Carriage Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tiller? Mr. Evelyn?
Just a couple of things. Again, I'd like to congratulate all the graduates out there this evening. And also like to thank Krista and Wanda, who were who make this this thing happen year after year. And all the all the staff from the county. Every year, people come back and tell us that they just could not realize everything that that goes on at the county. So thank y'all again, like Mr. Hathaway said, for taking the time out of out of your schedule and attending the university to learn more about the county. I also like to thank Ms. Page. Last week, we had a board retreat. She organized along with Mr. Hathaway. Thank you. I thought that was very successful. So thank you for doing that.
My pleasure.
And I guess we have a broadband town hall advisory. I mean, broadband.
Virtual town.
Virtual town hall coming up, and I'm sure you're gonna enlighten the citizens about that a little bit. Like, since you put it together, I'll let you talk about that. But anyway, again, congratulations to all the graduates.
Okay. And so have several things, and one thing I'm really excited about. When we talk about what our staff does here, it does not stop with what they're doing here. It continues on to our farmer's market. So we are excited to announce that on Saturday, November the 14th. And I know that none of you here have anything to do, so we will look forward to seeing you at our farmer's market between 9:00 and 11:30. And they we have an abundant of vendors that will but not not over the legal guidelines for COVID and that will be at our New Kent High School parking lot. It is our fall festival. And please, all the details and the vendors will be on our website. So again, we have Krista and working very, very hard with that and coordinating everything under the supervision of Mr. Hathaway. So we thank you for doing that, and we look forward to seeing everybody out there. No rain on Saturday. Also, on Saturday, a busy day. It's gonna be another food drive that's sponsored by New Eland Baptist Church. They have a tractor truckload of boxed food that that's being given out through USDA. And bring some mussels because I was there the last time helping. They are heavy boxes with fresh produce, dairy products, and meat. And that starts at 9:00. And so New Eland Baptist Church is located on Cumberland Road. So if you know if you know of anyone in need, please tell them to show up and they will make sure that they are that they are served and it's while it lasts. And then at the farmer's market, excited because of COVID and our seniors being isolated. New Kent Parks and Recreation will be giving out senior blessing bags to our New Kent residents that are 65 and over. And so we just encourage you to bring out a senior with you and stop by there. And as Mr. Evelyn said, congratulations to our New Kent University graduates. You didn't think a board meeting could be so much fun, could you? But you should have been here earlier this year. Wow. But we thank you so much for your participation and please have. And please have no fear in volunteering to do anything in your great county. This is your great county. Thank you for our sheriff's department. Our logo mask was an idea that came through our sheriff's department. So we thank you, Sheriff Joe, and your department, not only for tonight, but we thank you for your efforts during our election. You all were everywhere all day. And I'm proud to say we had no incidents here in New Kent County. And for that, we are very, very grateful. And just in case we don't see you all again as a board, we want to say that we hope that you have a happy and a blessed Thanksgiving season. And please, 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 love upon your family, but be safe in doing so. And so that is all I have. And we will move on to staff reports. You have one thing, Mr. Hathaway?
Oh, I have several things, Madam Chair.
You all have to excuse me. My mother had a broke elbow. And today, they said she could take her cast off, and she could cook all the meals in the house. So I am ecstatic. So, you know, I'm trying to calm myself down for this, and my dad is twice as happy, trust me.
Madam Chair, as we talk, there may or may not, probably will not be a work session in November. So therefore, there are several actions that are in progress that you take tonight that cannot wait to our December meeting.
Okay.
The first action is, at our last board meeting, you approved a contract with River Street Networks in the amount of $79,995 to develop a plan for the construction of a fiber network in New Kent County. I am asking, and you have a motion before you, to appropriate the funding for that contract.
Okay, you've heard the presentation by Mr. Hathaway. Do we have any questions? Yes, Mr. Lockwood?
Madam Chair, I move to appropriate $79,995 from the capital fund balance for contractual services with River Street Networks to develop a plan for the construction of a fiber optic network in New Kent County.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. The next item I have is a carryover from our board retreat last Friday, where we heard a presentation by the sheriff's office regarding staffing needs. I was directed to see if we could fund three new dispatcher positions. And I will note for the public, there were five that were requested, and we'll work on the other two during the upcoming budget process. So you have a motion before you to appropriate $77,972 from general fund balance, which is the funding needed to fund three new dispatcher positions for the remainder of this fiscal year. I would ask that you amend this motion and state that I move to appropriate up to $77,972. Whether or not all of this funding will be needed will be based on how quickly we can bring that staffing on.
Thank you. Are there any comments, discussion? Mr. Tiller?
No, there was no other comments. I was going to make a motion, but I think Mr. Evelyn had something to say.
No.
I thought it hurt someone.
Mr. Tiller?
But there's no other comments. Madam Chair, I move to appropriate up to $77,972, my glasses fogged up, from general fund balance to create three new dispatcher positions to be filled during the fiscal year 2020 through 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn? Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Okay, Madam Chair, the next item. We've talked about the upcoming Clean County shredding event on November 29. The motion you have before you is to transfer up to $250 to cover the cost of that event.
Thank you. Any questions, discussions?
I just would like to say that I appreciate Mr. Hathaway getting that done today. It looks like we're probably only going to need $107, but we just wanted to make sure we had enough to cover any unexpected charges. But it probably will only be $107.
Okay, so we would ask you to amend the motion to say up to?
Yes.
Okay.
It already does.
Okay. We entertain a motion, Mr. Lockwood?
Madam Chair, I hope my glasses won't fog up. I move to approve the transfer of up to $250 from the Reserve for Contingency Line item to the New Kent County Litter Grant Line item for the November 29, 2020 Clean County shredding event.
Thank you. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Tiller? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
And, Madam Chair, the last item that I have is a proposed appropriation motion of $33,055, which consists of the funding that we were awarded last week by the state of Virginia for their CARES Act broadband grant. This funding will fund extensions of the Cox Cable service in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Any questions, discussions? I will say that, I will say that I truly believe that this is the first of many. And my hope is that they will extend it, and we will be able to get broadband to other residents as well. I entertain a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Steers?
I move to appropriate $33,055 received from the Commonwealth of Virginia's Fast Track Broadband Coronavirus Relief Fund to extend broadband service provided by Cox Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Steers. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Ms. Page, if I may, just one thing on the Fast Track, just for the public, if they're not aware of it. That was a project that the state funded that was based on work that could be completed before the end of the year. So these were planned, these were projects that were already planned. They already were engineered. And with the coronavirus money that the federal government gave to the state, we were able to have a few additional homes connected because there were already plans in effect. So that's where that funding is coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my report.
Okay. And then the other business as well. Appointments. Do we have any appointments delegated by district, Mr. Lockwood?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Steers?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Tiller?
No, ma'am.
Appointments not delegated by district, Mr. Lockwood?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Steers?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Tiller? Mr. Evelyn?
No, ma'am.
All righty. Not quite so fast. So next we have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to go in close session pursuant to Section 2.2-37118.1 of the Code of Virginia for discussion and consideration of performance and salaries involving the county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Mr. Hefty, would you like to explain to New Kent University what we're getting ready to do?
We're going to go into the back room to discuss a personnel matter, and we will be back. And will we take action?
No.
No.
And so we will not take action, meaning we will not be doing any voting when we come back. Please feel free to stay and mingle if you would like. And so at this time, we'll go into closed session. Okay. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.